Let's start this show. Seven o'clock, would you please rise, take off your hats and listen to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We've got a quorum, we've got the call to order, we've got the pledge. We have two sets of minutes. The first one is the executive session, January 22nd, 2019. Any discussions, corrections, pleasure of the council? Approve these minutes?
Make a motion to approve these minutes?
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Executive session approved. Also have the regular council minutes of January 22nd.
Make a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve. Second. Got a second, any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. First up is the farm lease bid opening, Laura.
So we advertised for farm lease bid and we received one.
R for the course.
It's from B and K Family Farms, 207 West County Road 200 South, Danville, Indiana 46122. And the amount of their bid is $700. I believe that's the same amount as last year.
All right. It's a pleasure of the council. Shall we accept this bid?
There's no other bid, so...
No, there's not. Makes it pretty easy.
It's a zero.
Up or down, right?
Zero. Motion to pass, accept their bid?
We have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor of accepting this bid, signify by saying aye. Aye. It's passed. Hendrix Regional Health Clinic update, Beth Cisco. Hi Beth. If anybody comes up to speak tonight, please step up to the mic. We've had several people that watch us on YouTube that can't hear. If you make comments from your seat, just step up, state your name and go from there.
Good evening. I'll be very respectful of time given the agenda. Meeting with Laura and Jenny recently, we went over the wellness center, the clinic usage. And since we launched the shared model, which we did that on May 1 of 2018, so that we, you all may know, the fact that we extended the geographic footprint of the wellness clinics as far as for the town of Danville with your shared wellness clinic with Danville School Corporation. At the time, prior to May 1, you had only six hours a week. What we did is we launched May 1 with, again, a shared model, which actually allowed all of your employees on the health plan to be able to go to any of our wellness centers. When I say clinic and wellness center, it's the same, it's synonymous as far as nomenclature. But they're able to go to Danville. We have two now in Brownsburg, we had one in Avon and then we opened one in Plainfield as of October 1. And so we've seen a great percentage of utilization because we were concerned for the town that we were seeing a dropping or trending, since we've been working with you for about eight years with the wellness clinic, of individuals using the appointments and the number of folks actually that were utilizing the clinic. So we wanted to be coming back with a model that allowed, again, that footprint. So instead of six hours, now your employees on the health plan have 48 hours and, again, five locations. So expansion of geography, days of the week and times of the day. So we've seen, actually, Laura, if you want to go to the next one, if you look at this, as far as it's a, the pie chart denotes specifically that 80% of the health visits, the wellness clinic visits by your employees and their respective dependents and spouses were at the Danville Wellness Clinic and 20% actually elected to go to one of the other ones. So again, we've seen increased utilization in numbers as well as the other locations. We also, as of May 1, launched a concierge line more facilitating navigation because we had some comments that individuals didn't like to schedule online or ask questions and such, so we launched the 838 Well Number. And again, based on the documentation that I provided to Laura in advance of this meeting, we've seen, again, an exponential lift in those encounters because individuals now can call and/or get online to schedule to cancel. We've actually found that the 838 Well Number has become more of a triage number. People are retaining it because we chose specifically a wellness or a vanity number that people would retain. So they're calling about not just clinic scheduling and canceling, but referrals to other physician specialists. If they're having a bad day, maybe just want to talk to a warm, you know, voice on the other line, I'm not certain. But we're seeing a nice increase on that. So these are just some of the numbers. Again, I'd mentioned 33% increase in your wellness center appointments just for the town, 20% outside of the wellness clinic at Danville, 29% we went to a mail order prescription process. We've seen a nice lift with that, the number of telephone encounters with the 838 Well Number. And I want to say along, pretty much have a strong lift to one of our team members, Lisa Saifar, who's been working with several members of the town of Danville, engaging with various activities to enhance exercise and nutrition and such. And so you'll see there that 71 pounds have been lost or were lost in 2018 from that group with whom we've been working. So those are all exciting numbers and such. This just gives you or the group at large an understanding of our, again, our shared model. We work with 10 different partners, inclusive of, as I mentioned, Danville Schools, Brownsburg Schools, Plainfield Schools, the town of Plainfield, Avon Schools, et cetera. But before, again, coming from Hendrix, I like to see all green. Little joke there. But so when we add, like addition, I just had a conversation today with Northwest Hendrix and they may entertain moving their wellness clinic with us, so we'd want to fill up the empty boxes so that we would even be able to offer more than 48 hours a week. And then Laura, I think, other than that, this is more pertinent to where the locations are and the other information is just to ensure that we have access across our system for immediate care facilities as well as our emergency departments now that we have two, one in Danville and one in Brownsburg with the opening of our second hospital last January. I think that's, that's pretty much it. Any questions or concerns?
Any questions?
When will I lose 100 pounds?
We'll work on that together. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much. I know I've used it from, I teach at the high school, so I've used it from the school side.
Good.
And it works great and so with that being available to our employees, I think that's a great opportunity.
That's good to hear because we've heard from Dr. Schaefer and others as far as that, again, those six hours were very difficult for bus drivers, teachers, whomever. So we're, you know, we were tickled to add that additional access and such, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, Chamber of Commerce's funding request, Jennifer McPeak. By the way, hello Chamber.
Hello. Good evening, Councilman. I'm Jennifer McPeak. I am the past president of the Board of Chambers for the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce. Like to thank you for allowing me to come back up here to answer some of your questions that we were unable to answer at the moment last week. Unfortunately, we don't always have the answers right on demand. There are 14 board members that receive reports monthly and quarterly to keep up on those. I would like to thank Marsha, though, for assisting me this evening in the research to answering your questions from her fabulous job of housing the information as well as keeping the board informed of the operations. I know that Mr. Nielsen, you had questions regarding some of the members regarding Crawfordsville. That is our own Kevin Hill and a past board member of the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce. And then Tennessee is a member, is Carson Newman University Online Scheduling. Each business has its own reason for joining the chamber based on their ideas and purpose of that. So unfortunately, we're not able to speculate of why they decided to join the Danville, Indiana Chamber and don't assume they do that. Absolutely. You did receive your packets for this evening with the answers to the last questions that you had asked us last week, as well as additional questions that you had forwarded on to us. For the interest of the council meeting, I'm not going to go line by line, but if you do have any further questions or need clarification, do not hesitate to ask. I will do my best to answer those questions for you. Also, I would like to ask if you request in addition to the funding. First, we do have our farmer's market that is coming up on Saturday mornings. We are going to request the closure of Jefferson Street. That would be from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that would be May 11th, 2019 to September 7th, 2019. The setup will be the same as past years with the fire lane on the west side of the street. We've already spoken with Ray Whitaker and all is good with him. We would also like to request the employee parking lot of the town hall for the Saturday of Mayberry in the Midwest, since we can't be on the square that weekend. It would be the same hours and that date would be May 19, or excuse me, May 18th of 2019. Second, I would like to request more money as well. Yes?
Can I talk to you about that? Farmer's Market?
Yes, absolutely.
We were doing work on the roads there around the square.
Correct.
And had to move the farmer's market to over by Frank's.
Yes, sir.
And after seeing that done, I used to drive by the farmer's market and then I couldn't go in because you couldn't go in there.
Right.
And when it was on the other side, I could drive by and go in and park.
Now...
And I thought the other side is way better than the side that you...
We have spoken with our market master as well and we do have some merchants that request us to be on the other side, so the courthouse can help protect their goods with the sun exposure of it. So that is the reason why we're continuing to keep it on Jefferson rather than move it to the other side, due to the sun exposure of that. Did that answer that question well enough for you? Yeah, it has been taken into consideration. So second, I am going to request more funding for the fireworks. This is something that you should have on there as well, too. It's a total of $10,000 for fireworks that we're requesting. The total fireworks bill will be $15,000, but the chamber will getting sponsorships and donations to cover the third of the bill as we have done in the past. That $10,000 is just passed through to the fireworks professional. Third, I'd also like to request the council to appoint a liaison as an ex officio member to join our Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. The councilmen will be receiving our monthly reports as well as have a seat at our board for meetings quarterly to discuss the progress of the chamber. Previous years, we have had Jeff Martin on the board, however, since his departure, we have not had a council member to participate. Our next board member, well, we had an ex officio, but he was not participating in the board coming regularly to the meetings. Jim Stevens was between Jeff Martin and now. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, February the 12th. It is at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So if you are able to appoint a liaison, let us know and we can give you where we'll be located and give you all our financials or the board packet for that as well. Fourth, I'd like to make sure that communication from the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce and the Danville Town Council is kept and you would like any additional monthly, quarterly, yearly financial reports and who we should make sure the reports are received to. If you would like to continue going to that liaison or if you have another specific person that you would like those to get to, so it gets through the whole town council, please do let us know so we can add that to it. Last, what I would like to, the council to do, is to look over the agreement that the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce and the town of Danville signed last in 2009. That is in regards to the future placement of our chamber. You have been informed this year that Marsha is going to be leaving as the executive director. We would like to keep the progress forward with the Danville Chamber and to attract qualified applicants to the office space and location, whether it be the main floor, second floor, wherever you feel us best fit, we're good with. But it is vital for our search for that applicant as well. The chamber, over the past year, has had four different locations as well, too, so that's really why we're requesting to try to stay in the town hall area. Last, this is just a point, I'd like to highlight...
Is this the last last or second?
This is, this is it. I'd like to highlight that over the past 12 months, the chamber has raised $86,000 for events that are in partnership with the town, with the chamber only retaining $13,000 of it. We have worked very hard to help fulfill our commitment to the town in many ways and are looking forward to another great year partnership with the town of Danville and the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce. So I know I've given you a lot to add to your retreat, I apologize, but I look forward to continuing on with that.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you request for additional funds for the fireworks?
Those were already in that, the $10,000. They've previously been in the budget for that. That wasn't, no, that wasn't an additional portion of it. It was us coming and asking for that again.
Well, first of all, thank you for the plethora of information.
Yes, absolutely.
The financials, the color coordinated, coordinated answers to our questions. This is great information.
Wonderful.
And I do appreciate it.
I can't totally take the responsibility for that.
And I know, Marsha, you had a big hand in this and I thank you because this is good information.
Yeah.
That you were able to share with us.
Oh, absolutely.
I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. We want to make sure that you do continue to get the financials with that as well, too. So if there is somebody that you would like to appoint that would be able to share that with the rest of you, or if you would like us to send those with the packet, whatever is going to be the best way, please let us know. We'd be happy to honor your wishes to get that to you.
How did you do that in the past? Did you just send it to Gary?
What we were told before is to send it to the ex officio and that he would be sharing it with the rest of the council members. Yes, Gary was on the board as well, too. We felt that we had that covered, unfortunately, as diving into it now, we're finding that the breakdown was there and that we want to correct that and see how we can help with that.
Okay. Let's take a look at...
My requests?
Your laundry list.
Okay.
First things first, the closure for Farmer's Market. How do you feel? Any problems?
Nope.
Keep the produce fresh and keep it on Jefferson? You like that? Ray, did you have something to say?
Yes, we still will need electricity. Thank you, Ray. Yeah. I'm going to let Marsha take over this. This is not area expertise.
Marsha Lynch, Executive Director. Everything will be the same as it's always been before. No changes. So if you'll provide the cones, I think our market masters put them out and set them aside and, but yes, we will still need the electricity.
Good. Good. So let's take these one at a time, shall we? Right? We have a request for closure. Do we need anything formal other than consensus?
In the past, you voted on it.
Okay. So if anybody wants to make a motion to accept these closures for the Farmer's Market from May 11th to September 7th?
So moved.
And then also, do you also have the 18th? Okay.
That's right.
And the...
Also include May 18th...
The employee parking lot?
For the employee parking lot.
Yes, please.
Yes. I have a second. Got a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those away. All right. So the next item up on the request is $10,000 for the fireworks. We earmarked that money in the past. It goes to a great cause. One of the highlights here in Danville on the 4th, everybody can see it. The high school is packed.
Well, in this year, this year with 4th of July being in the middle of the year, it's, or middle of the week, it's going to be a little more anticipated of more people attending as well, too.
Few times I see that school full of, full of faculty.
Yes, that is one of our events that we do. It's really where the chamber is not making any money, our family Fourth Fest. It is with the volunteers of the West Bridge Church to help us with that as well, too. So that's something that we do put on for the community to highlight Danville and do have a lot of different individuals coming into Danville for that.
Great. What's the wishes of the council?
Make a motion we fund the fireworks.
With $10,000?
With the tune of $10,000.
Excellent. I have a second. Second, all in favor, other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That was coming from the host, is that correct?
Yes, it's in the budget for the host.
Excellent. Appointment for a liaison, do we have anybody who wants to volunteer or is this something we want to discuss at our retreat this Saturday? Discuss at retreat. How do you guys feel? Any discuss? We'll get back to you on that one after we have our retreat Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 ish. Our laundry list got pretty long, so we're going to have to...
You're welcome. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes.
All right. And then let's see, how to share the information with council?
Yeah.
Again, we'll get back to you on that one.
Absolutely, after the retreat.
My cut is to say to go with the liaison and then they can give us reports or... Thought for just a second. Laura? Anything on here, funding, chamber? As far as a quarterly payment?
That request was made by the clerk treasurer, so that's why this item got added to the agenda.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we need, if we need something to go ahead and prove that. Prove it right now.
Make a motion to approve that.
I'm adding to your list.
Okay.
This is the next, next, next.
Next, next, next. I know, sorry. I like to...
Keeping the chamber in the town hall, that is, again, something we will discuss on Saturday. And finally, through the recommendation of the clerk treasurer to make quarterly payments to the chamber, and I'm sorry, I don't have that dollar note here. A fourth of your $45,000 that we...
Yes. Can I mark that over to Marsha? She has all those numbers. You asked me how much I'm going to get quarterly at my office, I can tell you, but I'm going to bring that over to Marsha. She houses that information.
It's been approved at 45 for the year payable and quarterly payments of $11,250.
$11,250. Thank you. So in order to do that tonight, we're going to need a motion.
I make a motion that we fund the first quarter of $11,250 for the Chamber of Commerce.
Hey, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Got something today? We've got a motion on the floor, but you need to... Question if I got a second. Guys, for the lack of a second.
Just wanted to do the same motion, but I want to add to it.
Second, or it'll die. Okay, the motion dies. Now, go ahead, Tom.
Okay. We run a business and we've passed $45,000 in our budget last year.
Correct.
You people are fine people. You have 13 prominent people in, is 13 on your board?
There are 14. Well, currently 13 without the councilmen. Yes, correct.
Many prominent people in the town. But we know you well for many, many years. So I think that we should pass funding for the whole year and we pay you quarterly. It's not right for you to sit there and wait that tomorrow on a quarter, you're not going to have any money. There's people in there that are running families and doing stuff and it's not like we don't know you. If you were the cleaning company we hired last year, then I didn't, wasn't liking them, so I would pay them once a month and then maybe keep them or get rid of them if they didn't show up. It seems like we found a problem of communication between us and you.
Correct.
Kind of understandable. We change to people up here and over there. So I think to keep everybody at ease in the chamber, I would like to make a motion that we fund them for the whole year on quarterly payments and then we can discuss anything we need at these quarterly meetings like a normal business and not to hang that over their head every, every quarter.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the full amount of $45,000 in increments of $11,250 quarterly payments. Do I have a second? Second. Got a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 3-1.
Wonderful, thank you.
And we will get back to you with those other things.
Yes. With the, in regards to the housing of ours, if we could do that as a two-year, I think that would be the best as a two-year contract for the terms of the lease for that.
We'll take that under advisement.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Chamber people, you don't have to hang around now. You know, you know the routine. You're going to be here a while. Okay. Thank you for, thank you for coming. We'll be in touch probably Monday. Unless you want me to call you over the weekend.
I'll be in Dallas on Tuesday, on Saturday, but I'll be available.
Who's running the show?
We'll meet you there.
All right, moving on. We have a public hearing for the Edmondson Lane annexation, so I'm going to close this meeting. I am going to, hold on just a second. I'm going to gavel a public hearing open for any comment on this annexation. Now forever hold your peace. Gavel that closed. We had no public comment. And let's see. Now we're on to...
Fiscal policy.
The fiscal policy. Gabbling again? Okay. The fiscal plan is a resolution, is it? Resolution 6, 2019, fiscal policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the town of Danville, Indiana. W E Farms and Duane and Fisher Lane, super voluntary annexation. Laura, any comments?
Only if you have any questions for me.
Questions about the fiscal policy. Okay. What's the pleasure of the council? So we, shall we accept resolution number 6, 2019? Oh, yes or no, folks? If I could speak to this real quick, getting voluntary annexations is...
You consented to annex the property.
We need to pass it.
This needs to be adopted tonight, yes.
So how do I say it? Make a motion that we adopt this?
Accept resolution.
Accept this resolution.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept resolution number 6, 2016, the fiscal policy. Do I have any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Resolution 6 is passed. Okay. I'm going to gavel this meeting closed. I'm going to gavel the public hearing for a Beasley annexation. Any public comment on the Beasley annexation? Do about a dozen of these, we're going to get really good at it. No comments? I'm going to gavel that closed then. And we're up to the fiscal plan for the Beesleys. This is resolution number 7, 2019, fiscal policy resolution for the annexing contiguous territory to the town of Danville, Calvin A. Beasley, Beasley's Land Holding, One, Two, LLC, super voluntary annexation. Same idea here, folks. Like it? Let's pass it.
I make a motion, we pass it.
I have a motion to accept resolution number 7, or pass resolution number 7, 2019. Do I have a second? Second. Got a second? Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? 7 passes. Sorry, got to turn the page. And we have a public hearing on the bio-response tax abatement. Laura, jump in here if I'm going too fast.
You're doing fine.
Once again, we have a public hearing, so I'm going to gavel this meeting closed. I'm going to gavel a public hearing open. Some more gavel banging than I've done in a long time, folks. Hopefully it's the last. Any, any public comment? Hearing none? I'm going to close this meeting. All right. All right. So we have resolution number eight. Infirmatory resolution regarding the application of BioResponse Solution, Inc.
I make a motion, we pass number eight.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept resolution number eight, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution eight's passed. Okay. Moving on to ordinance. Excuse me. Resolution, wait. Yes, I'm sorry. Resolution four, bad debt utility accounts. Jenny's not here tonight. We do get these periodically. Laura, do you have anything you wanna say about these?
Just once a year, it's customary for her to review the bad debts and have those written off, and this is the resolution presenting those items for this year.
We don't have a total on this, but by my calculations, we're looking at $1,862.33 of bad debt that we just have not been able to collect.
What's the process now? Does this go on the property as a lien, or do we assign it for a collection agency?
It's my understanding this is just written off the books, and we've made every attempt to collect prior to. Two, three, Kathy.
What?
No, you had another question. All right. So what's the pleasure of the council? Shall we pass resolution four? Write off these bad debts and move on?
I make a motion, we pass number four, or the bad debts.
Motion to approve resolution number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number four, 2019, an ordinance to amend the town code for parking passes in reserved spaces. Jenny's not here. Is the chief public defender here? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on this?
I would like to offer a resolution or a, an idea. It appears that this parking issue keeps rearing its head, and maybe it's time that we took a long, hard look at this. I'm thinking that perhaps if we can develop a committee of people that are affected by this, like three merchants on the square, one of the judges, somebody from the sheriff's department, a couple of people from the town, like Will Lacy and Chief Rainey, and find somebody else in the county who has a vested interest in this parking issue, have them meet and come up with some solution that fits everybody's concerns and needs, and then present it back to us so that we can, better, more fair, equitable way, solution for the parking issue.
That was three merchants.
Three merchants, one judicial person, one, two county people, sheriff, and since they have parking issues there, since the county has a vested interest in the courthouse, and one, two people from the town, Will and Chief Rainey. We've got the people with those two from the town administration area on it. See what we can come up with. See what they can come up with. Give them a couple of months or so and feed it around.
Laura. Is this saying that we're gonna put parking places there all the time for them?
This is, they're requesting to be given a pass that they can hang on their rear-view mirror that will exempt them from any parking enforcement, no matter where they park on the square.
So instead of them running down over exaggeration every two hours to put a quarter in the meter or to move their car, that's what they want? That's what the parking pass does.
Correct.
See, that's not. Run them around. But then, all the businesses have to do the same thing, don't they?
I think as long as the square has been developed, there's been parking problems. Horse and buggy, all the way up to golf carts. I don't know that we've ever come up with an equitable solution. There's always somebody that's upset with this. The chief public defender is in an appointed position or is that an elected position? Elected. Pass our policy has been just to give elected officials.
That's correct.
In that case, judges.
Right. Until 2014, when you allowed the magistrates and the court administrator to have passes. That was three additional that were not elected. The IT director also requested one, but that one was denied.
Chris, do you have any thoughts on this? Ordinance or disposal for it? Yes. You have to be cognizant of the merchants' needs, and they're constantly talking about parking. Parking enforcement officer now, very diligent from what I hear. Whether or not we get them collected is another thing. Idea of giving out some more, or at least ready to find out, go with this. Laura, what do you think?
Well, as I stated in my briefing, it's a very slippery slope once you start allowing these select individuals to have passes, because I'm sure everyone in the courthouse can justify their position as being important and needing to be close to the door. As I mentioned in the briefing, the county does have several periphery parking lots. They don't assign spaces except in the case of the prosecutor's office where they have designated three parking spaces for that office. This individual has not gone to the county to ask them for a designated space in any of their lots. They came to the town first requesting a pass, obviously because if they got it, they're gonna be much closer than a half a block away. And we have several lots that the town has spent money on and created trying to relieve the parking pressures on the square. These are employees who do business in the courthouse. They're not customers of our merchants. So giving them an opportunity to park and take a space up for extended periods of time on the square has typically not been the council's desire. But obviously, you do have a few of those passes out there for elected officials and judges. So it's, but it's, it's difficult. You start opening the gates, you're probably gonna see a few more of those requests.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They'll all be out. Dig underground and make a parking lot underneath the whole town.
Let's deal with one thing at a time. First thing, let us deal with ordinance number four. Whether or not we want to give this chief public defender a pass or not.
The IT person of that?
No, this is the chief public defender.
Okay.
If I may hazard an opinion. I agree with Laura on this one. I would be inclined to, for, would, of, I'm gonna look at this, merchants, because they need to deal with ordinance four now.
First, so I feel it's the culture of the town. The way we have our parking in that is difficult. The important people for the town are definitely the merchants that make money, have their businesses, feed their families. The courts, though, are in the center of the town, and that's very important, too, for us to keep the bad guys away. I know we've, like Laura said, we've had parking lots all around. I think to change the culture the way it is now is probably difficult. But I think to address the future, some other kind of parking, like we have been thinking about buying land, adding more parking is important. So I would feel that keep the status quo, but then take a look at who'd address that Answer is dig underground and make an underground parking lot? Go up above, get a 10-story parking lot?
$20,000 a space.
No. Yes, I know. So it might have to stay our culture. Some things we can do in our town and some things we can't. When we wanna do nice things, we have to raise your taxes. So I would suggest we just stay with the status quo and.
So we have ordinance number four, 2019, an ordinance to amend town code, title seven, chapter 74, schedule seven, parking passes, reserved passes. Do I wanna make a motion on this? Okay. This ordinance dies. We'll, if you ask for a shoot, we'll go around.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. Chief public defender, come in sometime and talk to us about that. Resolution number five, 2019, amend employee's policy handbook. Will?
In discussion with Jenny and the town manager, Laura Parker, we, this has already been passed. We're just amending the bottom line and the little asterisks I put for each membership or rental spot there. And the last line is all benefits expire immediately upon ending employment with the town of Danville, just because some of these things you can purchase for the year, and then if you quit, like say you were working January 1, you bought a membership, it would last for the whole year, but technically you're not a member of the town anymore. So just a little housekeeping thing. We had a few issues with it, and we just wanted to kinda clean it up a little bit.
If somebody bought something like that, worked for three months, left, prorated or is it just gone?
We don't wanna get into the prorating because the tracking of the prorating is very hard, and plus it's only $12, so.
Okay.
And it's $3 for the pool. And it's cheaper if they did one month, it's still cheaper than one month of, you know, rental if they did. So if they were there three months, technically they got 60 minus 12, so they got a pretty good discount.
If we do something like this, then I would make sure that all the town employees know it going forthwith.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll send it out. I'll have Jenny send it out, just with the amendment.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council? Do we add an asterisk here or not?
I'd let him do it. Motion?
Motion. Okay. We have a motion to adopt resolution number five, 2019, resolution to amend the town of Danville Employee Policy Handbook, section six, benefits.
Second.
I have a second. Further discussion? Everybody knows, so there's no surprises. I'm good with this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution six, or five is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Anything from the public? Your name and what do you do?
Good evening. Ben Comer, business owner on the square, and I just wanted to say on the parking issue that I urge you to engage the downtown Danville partnership in that discussion. They've got a lot of the liaisons that you've already referenced, all in the same place, on the same board, people that work with the county, people that work with the town, business owners, merchants, it's the perfect group to help you tackle this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Laura?
It is the grooming business right across from Beesley's. And as explained, when Beesley's, you gave consent for Beesley's, they need to connect the sanitary sewer, which is what's driving their annexation. This property across the street would like to partner with them so they can extend sewer service to their property as well. And in order to do that, obviously, they need to annex. So they came to me on Friday and wanted to move forward with that petition. So as is our custom, I'm seeking your consent to accept their petition should they submit one.
Counsel, would we like to add more property?
Yes. Sure. Is there a fee for people to hook onto our utilities like that?
Yes, sir.
How much is that?
$2,500 for a residential connection.
And a business's?
It depends if their usage is higher. Okay. Thank you for your consent.
Let's go for it. All right. Any department heads need to say something real quick?
This just came up. Did not have time to report to all the board members. I have reported it to Laura. Stratford Ridge problem has came back up. We have called for line locates to start digging and excavating out the mud. For those that don't know, Stratford Ridge has been a problem for quite a few years, and we have been working on that, trying to get the whole thing done as a project. But we have mud pumping up through the blacktop. Cars drive through it and sink in like a seagull.
Is that happening now, Ray?
It's happening now.
I mean, today or yesterday?
Today.
Okay.
And so.
It is a big problem then.
We have, what it is, the, there is no drainage under the road for the water to get away with this freeze and thaw. It has just worked that blacktop, and it's causing great big holes in the road. We had engineers come in. They told me to dig it out, put flowable fill in it, and put patch back under it until drainage could be put underneath that rope, which is gonna be quite costly. So.
Yeah. Ray, the weather this last week has been pretty bad on the roads.
Yes, yes.
I see lots of potholes now.
Yes. We've been out today patching those holes.
Yeah. Thank you.
So.
And that, we had a presentation a couple of months ago, I think, and we had a couple of different solutions.
Yes.
And, can't, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it around 500,000, give or take?
About that.
And, and we knew that this was gonna be a problem. I drove past it yesterday, or, yes, I went past it yesterday, and you could see.
Yes. It starts working. It's too late to do anything then. You just, you gotta cone it off to keep people from sinking in it, and then get line locates called and get in there and get it dug out and get it repaired. So I just wanted to let the board know I am aware of the problem and we are working on it.
Can you get a pic, can you get some pictures of that, too? I mean, I'm sure you've got them already. All right. Just, if you can share that with the council members, that way they have a great, if you haven't driven up there, you get a good appreciation of what Ray's got to deal with and what the people of Stratford have to deal with.
Well, I just wanted to let the board know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from any other department head? I ask about the public?
You did.
Oh, good. Just checking. All right. Around the horn. Jim?
As a follow-up, back toward the end of last year, we had a presentation by a local attorney concerning possible liability on the way we collect tickets or don't collect tickets. Did we refer that to our attorney and did we get a response from him? Did we refer that to our attorney, and did we get a response from him on that subject?
I'm aware that Jenny spoke with our attorney, I'm not aware of the results.
Back with Jenny.
Uh, we're gonna get another, uh, request for an unusual parking situation that has to deal with handicap things, so that may fit in with wherever we're going with this, uh, with this follow-up on this request and further parking problems.
Okay, anything else?
Chris? Uh, I did meet with the Hendrix County Solid Waste Management District, and the dates for talks-away days here at Danville at the fairgrounds are May eighteenth and September fourteenth.
Eighteenth and fourteenth at the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, a couple of things, uh, last week, several of us went downtown, Laura, Jim, Jenny, Will, myself, uh, to testify before the senate for the food and beverage tax. We found out today that that has passed through the third reading of the senate, and, uh, we will be testifying before the House Ways and Means on Wednesday. Get their blessings, then take the next step. I believe it's the governor's signature. Then we'll go from there. So we're just keeping everybody apprised of what's going on, so there's an agenda, okay? We're working through this, and there's really nothing to do until the house and the senate and the governor decide to do something. So, as soon as we know, we'll let Dee know. There you go. A couple other things here, real quick, I'm sorry, Dee, that was a cheap shot. All right, uh, number one, Suzanne, thank you for, why Suzanne here? Thank you for your, uh, your help, uh, in working with the town, that's much appreciated. To, uh, go back to Jim's request about a committee, uh, I'd like to discuss that at our work study, but I'm inclined to agree with it, and, and incorporate maybe Ben's suggestions. I know, Will, you're on the downtown partnership, you're the president, right? Okay, so we've, we've got some connections there, I think we can tighten that up, and then come back, uh, with a report, um, if we wanna go with, with a, a committee, and, and what their duties and responsibilities would be. And we can kinda think about that, talk about that, and get it spelled out. Fair enough?
Yes.
Other than that, congratulations to the Danville girls' basketball team, they're sectional champs, uh, we had several wrestlers that did, did well, um, trying to think if there's anything else. Yeah, no, 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 not yet, anyway. Uh, but that's kinda all the local news I've got. Uh, claim docket. We have to approve it. Anybody wanna make a motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve the claim docket, and we have a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Claim docket's approved. Good night, drive careful, it's foggy out there. Oh, and how you finally won a game?
After today.
And Brady is a Super Bowl champion again.
Okay.
Okay.